Good evening, Fillmore residents. I'm David Maron with the League of Women Voters. Welcome to our presentation tonight of the candidates running for Camarillo's coming sorry Fillmore City Council. We are going to hear from the candidates, opening statements, then we'll take the responses to the questions you submitted when you registered. And then we'll finally wrap up with closing statements. Two important points, we are recording and this will be available on our website within about 24 hours. And also, we are doing closed captioning for English to Spanish translation. If you have the latest version of the Zoom software, you should see a option for captions down by the bottom of the screen. Or in the more button and you could turn that on as well. At this time, I'd like to introduce the president of the League of Women Voters, Kathy Morgan for opening remarks. Kathy?
Thank you, David, and thank you to everyone for being here this evening. The League of Women Voters was founded in 1920 with the mission of educating a new group of voters, women, who were granted the right to vote nationwide with the passage of the 19th Amendment. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization committed to providing voters with factual, nonbiased information and as such does not support a particular candidate or political party. The League today continues with the mission of empowering voters and defending democracy by registering voters, providing information about the candidates and the issues, getting out the vote and supporting fair and transparent elections. The candidate forums are an opportunity for voters to hear from the various candidates and to get the information they need to make an informed choice when they vote. Attendees to the forum are invited to submit the questions they wish asked of the candidates when they register. The candidates have not been provided the questions in advance and each candidate will have the opportunity to answer the questions posed. We are glad that you are here tonight to hear from our candidates. We hope that you will get the information you need to make an informed choice. At this time, I would like to turn it back to tonight's moderator, David Maron. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Kathy. And we are going to give our candidates a minute and a half for their opening statements. We drew numbers randomly earlier. And our first candidate is Zach. When you're ready, Zach, please begin.
Thank you. Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum and to all of my fellow candidates and all of the residents who are tuning in right now to the forum to listen to all of us. My name is Zachary Lotshaw. And the reason why I am running for Fillmore City Council is because I believe we are in a time that needs some true positive change and honest leadership in city council. I have an education in law and public policy from CSU Channel Islands where I received my bachelor's. I'm currently in my second year as a law student at Colleges of Law in Ventura. And through that education, I have learned a lot about how we craft true and honest policy that actually impacts the residents' lives. Through that, through those, those types of policies. And as a community organizer, I have worked with many organizations, especially One Step Olivares in the city of Fillmore. That helps a lot with our underprivileged youth, providing them various different kinds of resources and programming for them after school and on the weekends. And it's a great community resource and all of the connections I have made through that work is what I bring to the city of Fillmore as a city councillor. So I hope that I can gain your support tonight. And I thank everyone for being here. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next candidate is Luis Rodriguez. So let's see if we've got your audio working.
Can you guys hear me?
We can, Luis. You're all set. When you're ready, you have a minute and a half for your opening statement.
All right, sounds good. So my name is Luis Rodriguez. I'm very excited to be here. I am so grateful to be a part of this forum. It's my first time ever having a conversation with, with all, with a ton of different candidates. I really appreciate everyone else for being here. Those of you who live in Fillmore, I don't want, need to, I don't feel like I need to say too much about myself, other than the fact that I've been involved in this community and I've grown up here my entire life and I love it. There's nothing I love more than waking up in the morning and seeing those hills that Alber Mendez has on his background. I think they're beautiful hills. I love it. And for the moderator, thank you so much for supporting our city and having our city hall right behind you. I think it's great. I come from a fine arts background. Over the years, I, I, I gained an affinity for entrepreneurialism and entrepreneurship and as well as helping other entrepreneurs express their passions while using my art talents. And so thank you very much for being, for having me.
You're welcome. Carrie, it's your turn. Share with us your opening statement.
Sure. I'm also grateful that we have four candidates here that we can discuss these issues that are really important to our community. I think we each bring something very different to the table. And background for me, I was born and raised in San Fernando Valley, moved to Ventura in 1984, 85, and then from the city of Ventura to Fillmore in 2010. I had a, have a desire to continually serve my community. I started out two years after moving to Fillmore by becoming part of the Film Commission. Two years after that, I was elected to city council in 2014. 2014, then in 2017, I served as mayor of the community. And that was through some pretty tumultuous times. That was when we were trying to deal with legalization of marijuana. Huge input from the community that I dealt with as mayor. And then there was a Thomas fire that was at toward the end of my term as mayor. And that was an experience that I couldn't have garnered from, you know, I think anywhere else. Just hands-on doing the job and that's where I think the bulk of my experience comes from. I just was encouraged to run by some of our local community leaders, not elected officials by, but by other leaders a few months ago. And initially I said, you know, you know, I served my term. And I've been on the planning commission since I left council.
Going to have to stop you there, Carrie. And we will wrap up with our next candidate, Albert. I will let's get you unmuted and whenever you're ready.
Hi, good evening. I want to echo the sentiments of Luis Rodriguez and Kerry Brogi. Very, very honored to be part of this forum and to share a little bit about my background. So I've lived in Fillmore for many, many years. I've been involved in and supported 4H coach, youth basketball, served on the Chevron Superfund Citizens Oversight Committee, and been a part of the planning commission for the past eight years. I've worked in accounting and finance for the past 25 years, have held positions with the Los Angeles Dodgers, City of Fillmore, and the Westlake Village Inn. I have a bachelor's degree in business administration. And on my free time, I love to spend time with my family, my grandchildren, my kids, my wife, and the passion of mine is running marathons. I'm running for city council because Fillmore is just a great place to live and I feel it's like my duty to serve my community and give back to my community. I am committed to working hard for the residents of Fillmore and grow our business district here in Fillmore. I will work hard to create partnerships with our local communities and improve business, education, and social services. Fillmore is our home and we all deserve to have a thriving, affordable, and safe environment to live in.
Thank you. Luis, we'll start the first question with you and let's talk about marijuana. So share with us your position about marijuana dispensaries in Fillmore. Do you support those or do you not? And are there other types of marijuana businesses that you would allow to operate such as lounges?
Well, that is a very controversial question, but I really appreciate it. While during the, the, the processes that were going on in the past, what in regards to legalizing marijuana here in town, there was a lot of citizenship that was a little bit upset with the scent that was coming off of the 126. Unfortunately, we live in a valley which is very, very narrow. It's very narrow. So any kind of growth that happens within that valley, the scent accumulates in the center and that's where we heard most of the complaints. For those of, those people who like recreational marijuana or medical marijuana, as it is legal in the, in, in the state of California. We do have Port Juani, which is just a stone's throw away near Oxnard. We also have Fillmore and, and the San Fernando Valley. I, I think, I think I would like to look at all options. I do, I am not close-minded about it. I am not totally against legalizing marijuana in Fillmore as a dispensary. However, I want to make sure that the youth is safe and protected from it. And if we have the space to do it without having the scent and, and the, the smoke infiltrate the neighborhoods that do not want it, then, then I would be for it. Otherwise, I think we, we need to protect this very narrow valley that we have.
Thank you. Albert, same question to you. Share with us your position about marijuana dispensaries. And are there other marijuana businesses like the labs or lounges that you would allow to operate?
As far as marijuana, as Louis said, it's been very controversial here in our city. I would support the growing of it in our valley. As far as labs or lounges, I would have supported in our downtown because that downtown should be more business friendly, for family friendly. And I don't think having that kind of element in our downtown would be appropriate in our downtown. I may, I would like to explore possibly having it in our business park, which hopefully will start to be developed soon. That'd be an interesting thing to look at as far as bringing in revenue for the city and tax dollars. But we'd have to do a lot of exploring and a lot of research to make sure that, as Louis said, we, we do it smart and, and we plan for it and make sure that the kids are safe. We don't bring the wrong elements into town. And then we do our research on who we bring in to do business here in Fillmore as far as the marijuana industry. We want to be smart about it and make sure the community is safe. And definitely I would have supported in our downtown, but on outskirts in the business park, that definitely would be a possibility.
Thank you. Zach, same question to you. Tell us if you are in favor or support marijuana dispensaries and what about other types of businesses?
Yes, I understand a lot of people have some really stronghold beliefs and opinions on this very issue. I think we all, the main issue for us is public safety and especially the safety of our, of our young people in the city. What, what helps with the dispensary in your community is not only the tax revenue that comes from it. Port Juani has seen millions of dollars come in in tax revenue that they have used to directly help their community, especially their youth. Not only is it the tax revenue and those programs that you can have, but when you have a dispensary, it takes away the criminal element of the selling of marijuana on our streets. It makes it safe. It makes it regulated. You know who's selling it. You can easily, you know, have regulations on how it's sold, when it's sold, where it can be sold. I agree with Albert. It shouldn't be in our downtown area, but I am not opposed to one within the city of Fillmore, especially because it will definitely provide a safer means for adults who wish to engage in marijuana to be able to do so without having to drive all the way to Port Juani or somewhere else and can cause, you know, problems in that regard. But I am, I'm supportive of a dispensary within the city of Fillmore.
Thank you. And Carrie, we'll go to you to wrap up this question on your positions on marijuana.
Okay, thank you. It was only a short five years ago that we dealt with this issue on the council. And after hearing from multiple, or literally hundreds of people on multiple council sessions, we turned it over to the voters and the voters said no. And we were talking at, at that point, we're talking about medicinal marijuana and recreational marijuana wasn't even on the top of the table. That was not even an issue. So the voters have said no once already. And I believe there was good reason for saying no. I know things change over time. But I certainly would want to go back to the voters with this if, if it came before us. I wouldn't want to share in the event that it does come back to the council and I'm on council. I would not want to say yes or no, how I would decide the issue. That would actually preclude me from being able to cast a vote at that point in time if I already have revealed what my position is on it. But again, I don't believe that Port Juani has received millions of dollars. They received less than what they had anticipated. There's already some hard fast laws on the books where people can have six plants in their own yard. They can grow their own and there's no reason that we should not go back to the voters on this again. If it comes up, it gets to that point.
Okay, thank you, Carrie. We're going to stay with you for the next question. Let's turn to housing and affordable housing in particular. Carrie, share with us your plan to bring more affordable housing to Fillmore. Are there certain types that you believe that should be encouraged? And certain neighborhoods where you think they should be encouraged?
Well, having been on council and also on the planning commission, I know that there are already designated locations that could possibly accommodate affordable housing. And so the city is constantly aware of that. The city will not go in and build the affordable housing. City doesn't build buildings. But if a developer comes in and says, we want to put a complex here. What the city does is a, because per statute, we have to have a certain percentage of every development that comes in as low income affordable housing, four different categories of income that we have to meet and a percentage of each of those incomes. There have to be a unit to match that criteria and that's by statute from Sacramento. So I think by, we're currently at, on top of the, the numbers that we're supposed to have, that Sacramento dictates that we have. And I think if we continue to follow the, the lead of the plans that the city's laid out, that the planning department's already laid out, we will continue to have meet the affordable housing that Fillmore is required to have.
Thank you. Zach, same question to you. Share with us your plans for bringing more affordable housing to Fillmore. Are there particular types that you would encourage in particular neighborhoods where you think they should be placed?
I believe we really need to work directly with our developers in our area, such as many mansions, people self-help housing and Habitat for Humanity. Those are the main developers within Ventura County that are building affordable housing. We just had the Mountain View Apartments go up. They're having their grand opening on Wednesday. And that apartment complex, which I believe only has about 77, 78 units, had almost 900 applications, 800 of which came from residents of Fillmore. That tells us that there are hundreds of families within the city of Fillmore in dire need of affordable housing. We are not going to meet our needs that we currently have or we're going to have if we only meet the bare minimum set by Sacramento. We have to be bold in having actual developments that have more than just five affordable units within them, which is what happens when, when you apply those percentages that we have for an inclusionary housing policy. It needs to be fully affordable housing, which is low income, very low income, and extremely low income units. Because those are the families that are currently living in Fillmore, who are living in their garages, who are living multiple families to one home and we need to support them now, not in five or 10 years.
Thank you. Albert, same question to you as far as affordable housing. What types would you encourage? Where would you place it?
I would want to see more diversity in our housing. I think as Zach pointed out, I think we need to do a better job of partnering with organizations such as Habitat for Humanity and the Cabrillo Economic Development. I think those were good partners that have built projects here. Well, I don't know about that for Randy, but Cabrillo has built a good project here that we have and it's a, should be a model for a lot of the affordable housing that we build in Fillmore. I think we've done a terrible job as far as addressing our affordable housing. We've built homes not for the residents of our community, but we've built homes that have attracted a lot of people from outside of our community that our residents can't afford. You know, and that, that's a shame on us. Shame on Fillmore for doing that. We should have built homes for our community. For the people that live in Fillmore and were born and raised in Fillmore. Because most of those people can't afford these homes that we built.
Okay, thank you. Luis, you're up next. Share with us your plans for increasing affordable housing.
You know, I was, I was happy to hear about the development that was on Mountain View, the Mountain View Housing Development. And just like Zachary said, I was surprised to hear that it was only 77 units. So definitely does not meet the demand. There's a common misconception going around, that had been going around for the last few years about the, about the the water situation in Fillmore and there's, continues to be a misconception going on about the housing development. Unfortunately, we are restricted by our land and our ability to build. However, we do have infill locations that are zoned for these kinds of development. Unfortunately, they're not very large. So when developers come in and they take a look, they see that there is a parking restriction for the amount of parking versus the amount of units that they can build and we cannot build, we cannot do that. And they do it if they choose to. And unfortunately, not many have chosen, have chosen to do that. Now, just like the other candidates have mentioned, I think reaching out to these developers directly is going to be great. I think, I think that's gonna, that's gonna under, how have them understand the mission is greater possibly than the profits that they can make. However, we are not at, we're not in control of this. We're in control of zoning. We're in control of, of making sure that we facilitate for these developers. And it's easy for me to say that.
Thank you. I'm going to have to stop you, Luis. I want to make sure you, you can also see the timer, right? Now it's the logo, L W V logo. Okay, Albert, you're up first on the next question. Before I give you the question, I want to remind viewers that in this election, you'll be voting for two candidates in the long-term or four-year seat. There is a separate election for two candidates running in the short term. We were unable to coordinate with them to have them participate tonight. We are going to try and set up another forum for those two candidates if possible. Albert, we're on the subject of housing and one of the things that people who cannot afford a home do is rent. Many cities throughout the county and state have looked into rent control ordinances. One of the challenges, I'm not sure about Fillmore, but in other cities, you have a large management companies that come in and own the properties and try to raise revenue. So share with us, Albert, your position about rent control. What will you do to try and protect working class and fixed income renters from outsized rent increases?
I think that as far as rent control, we need to look at implementing measures that cap how much a homeowner can raise rent in a, in a certain year. Because I, I understand that there are, it's unfair to also do that to property owners because they also incur cost as well as far as owning a home and renting it. And, but we have to be fair and we have to look out for our renters. There's, especially here in Fillmore where most people there's, can't find a, a place to rent. My two daughters just recently graduated from college and they have college educations. And they're having a hard time even just moving back to Fillmore. They can't afford that. So we definitely need to support rent control. But we also have to keep in mind property owners that they, they also have expenses that they have to cover.
Thank you. Carrie, same question to you. Do you support a rent control ordinance? What would you do to protect working class and fixed income renters?
I might have family members, as we all do, who have had issues with not being able to find rental properties locally that aren't just skyrocket. Our mobile home park here in Fillmore is a really good example of that where a person can go in, I know this to be true. My sister just recently moved here from Arizona and she's encountered this. She can afford to purchase the mobile home. But then you tack on just astronomical rent for the property. And it puts most people out of the possibility of even moving to the mobile home park. So yes, I, I certainly would look at ways to encourage the rent control, whether it's by ordinance, but whether if it might, it might possibly be something separate for the mobile home park in, in all likelihood as opposed to a developer that would come in. You'd run into problems on capping rental income, you know, and simply as Albert had said, the, you, you have to be fair to the property owner as well. But the rents in California, trying to cap them are going to be really difficult when the real estate market is what it is. And until that comes down, and I believe it is slowly, then we're going to see these rents and something action has to be taken, I think, in Fillmore. It hasn't in other cities.
Thank you. And Luis, share with us your thoughts about a rent control ordinance. Would you support that? What kind of policies would you do to protect the people that are renting now?
I would support that in regards to listening to what the, what the alternatives are and what the numbers are. I am renting. I am a renter. I am not a homeowner. I do live paycheck, paycheck, me and my wife, and we, we are very hardworking people. Now, when it comes to rent control, I need to learn more about what ordinances can be in place to protect the working class as well as it can, can we create ordinances to prevent outside hedge funds or, or outside larger entities from, from coming into town and building and then setting their prices very high. I'm not familiar with what kind of control that we can do on landlords because they are, you know, they are also owning property. They are also paying for, for their, the construction, the, you know, renewing the, the facilities. But I, I would like to explore other options and to see what we can do here in town and keep here in town and keep the buyers and renters here in town. That would be great.
Thank you, Zach. We'll wrap up this question with you. Your position on the rent control ordinance and policies that you could put in place to help renters.
Yeah, tenant protections is an area that I have studied very closely, especially in my education for my bachelor's degree. That was one of my main pillars for my capstone project, which was looking into what kind of ordinances actually do work. And a big one is a cap on rent increases, which helps residents stay in the homes that they have, for many of them rented for years, if not decades. Especially for people who live in El Dorado and our mobile home park. As Carrie mentioned, they can buy the mobile home, but they can't afford to rent the space which, that it's on. And as it currently stands, without an ordinance from the city of Fillmore, all landlords can raise rent up as high as 10% a year on top of that rent. And for people who are living on fixed incomes, they are one 10% rent hike away from being homeless. And we cannot allow that to happen. And that is something that I would do on day one, which would be direct staff to see what kind of ordinances that are at our disposal that we have as an option and to enact one of those immediately, especially a cap on rent increases. Specifically for El Dorado, because it only takes one more hike and many of those families and many of those seniors will be without a home.
Thank you, Zach. I'm going to stay with you for the next question. Let's shift gears and learn a little bit about your priorities. Share with us your top two or three goals if you are elected and how you'll go about accomplishing those goals.
Thank you. Yes, the, the top three goals I have are affordability, sustainability, and transparency. Affordability speaks to a topic we've already discussed tonight, which is affordable housing. We came directly with our developers to bring them into the city of Fillmore and to actually work hand in hand with them of where they want to develop, how we can help them develop and in ways that we could make the regulations and make ordinances a little bit better for affordable developers to come in. For sustainability, that's about our environment, protecting our environment and providing clean energy to all of our residents through the Clean Power Alliance, which will lower our rates if you, if we do join the Clean Power Alliance currently on SoCal, then they are capped out at the, at the amount that you can change over to renewable energy. Currently, you cannot do that. And the third is transparency. We need a city government that is working directly with our community. There are many community organizations and community leaders who really want to work with the city to inform our residents of what's going on, to empower them to be able to advocate for their own, their own interests and what their issues that they care about. So those are the three main reasons and, and how I'm going to implement that is by working with council on those common areas that we can direct staff to implement these types of policies and make it a better life for everyone in Fillmore.
Thank you, Luis. Same question. Tell us about your top two or three goals and how you'll go about working on those.
So my, my platform based on the three things that I value is community development. Now, this is to me is number one, it's going to be the most important. I, I would like to attract more jobs and more industry here in town. So we talk about, you know, people not being able to afford things, people not being able to pay their rent. People not being able to buy all the groceries that they need. At the end of the day, we need higher paying jobs here in town and it's very rare. There are just a couple of industries here in town that provide living wages. Now, we do have an industrial park here in town. Unfortunately, it's not very filled out. But my goal, number one, is to fill that out, to reach out to developers. But my goal, number one, is to fill that out, to reach out to developers. Um, I, I'm not at liberty at saying who um I'm in contact with in regards to to manufacturing and assembly lines. However, I will reach out and communicate and try to attract businesses to this town at the same time. Making sure that the allocated funds for downtown are used wisely to make sure our town is as beautiful as it possibly can be and attract the people with, that can bring in the revenue and inspire others to be entrepreneurs when they see their own local businesses do well. Youth programs, I would, that's something that I worked with for a few years. I worked at the unified school district for a few years. I'm sorry, I don't see the timer on here. I'm trying to fill it and fit everything in his box.
Thank, thank you. Yeah, if you're on a tablet, you might be able to swipe left or right and see uh the timer. It's an L W V logo or you'll see a countdown number. Uh, Carrie, you're up next. Please share with us uh your top two or three goals, how you'll go about achieving them.
Sure, um since I first moved to Fillmore, um and certainly when I was on council in two thousand fourteen. Um, I heard constantly about the lack of activities um and things for the youth in our community. Um, I believe that city of Fillmore and Parks and Rec and the schools do a great job of developing things that are um for kids who are very athletic or want to participate in team sports. Um, but aside from that, there's not a whole lot of other things for them to do. Um, and you know, we went the last few years, I don't think there's been a huge emphasis on that. We tried an arcade that didn't work. Um, wasn't successful uh for whatever reason, I'm not sure, but we need to focus on things for the youth to do. And I'm thinking even especially for our teenage youth. So that's one priority that I'll be working on. Um, another issue that just um really is tough for me to, to, when I talk about it now, and, and if you've heard me before, you've heard me speak of this. Um, we need to retain local control here in Fillmore and not allow Sacramento to start passing legislation that tells Fillmore what we have to do. The, it, and these ordinance are these um bills that they're passing, signing now are affecting all cities regardless. And as I commonly say, one shoe does not fit all. So what works for Westlake Village is not for the city of Fillmore and we need to fight city, or fight Sacramento on these issues when they're telling us what we can and can't do.
Thank you. Albert, same question to you.
Number one on my list, the same thing that Louis said is community development. We need to uh drive more business, uh especially to our downtown area and, and improve our downtown area. Uh, I plan on doing that by uh partnering with the businesses that we have already and with our Fillmore area uh fab business. And we train and recruit other businesses from outside of the area, but also grow the businesses that we have now. And doing that by showing them that the city is going to invest in Fillmore. By uh by tackling number two issue on my platform, which is our infrastructure. If the city uh can show, not just talk, but show um our business owners that we are invested in improving our infrastructure, such as roads, sidewalks, uh our parks. Maintenance in our parks. It's been, you know, I went out since day one and started talking to, to our local residents. What's their, you know, what are, what are their issues? Roads, improving our roads, sidewalks, maintenance of our parks, it all needs to be addressed. And I think if we can give our uh business owners that we have now confidence that we are going to invest in our city, then they can invest in themselves. Uh, number three is something personal to me is so more social services for our senior citizens. Um, I believe that uh maybe we can take our active adult center, lease it out to an expert that really knows how to uh provide services to our seniors. Uh, will be uh big for our city and our seniors.
Thank you. Luis, we'll start the next question with you. We'll shift to the environment. Um, share with us what you think the city of Fillmore can do to be more environmentally friendly and also prepare for the impacts of climate change. Are there particular policies or improvements that you would wanna see made?
In regards to improvements, um currently at the facility that I work at here in town, we do regular storm drain inspections. So currently, the Fillmore is very adamant as well as Ventura County when it comes to having the businesses take care of their area. Now, fortunately, there have been instances in the past where there has been um an abundance of pollution. However, with new industries coming in, that's something that I hope to do and that I plan to do is to make sure that they come in in a way where they do not infect the people or they do not pollute the river. I mean, this is a very valuable river that we have here. Um, our, our water supply extremely valuable. And so when it comes to town and, and local ordinances, I think we're doing pretty good. I think we can do better. However, we need to be careful about how we do it. I don't, I do not want to force citizens into being a hundred percent electrical on their grid. Um, I think this is a, this is a um person by person choice. And I believe that the, the forecasts of costs are not as accurate as some people would like to promote. And I believe that sometimes the people are gonna end up paying more for something that they, they don't expect to pay more for.
Thank you. Albert, same question. What do you think of the, or what do you think the city can do to be more environmentally friendly? And what um changes should the city make to prepare for climate change?
Uh, as far as uh what changes that the city can do to prepare for climate change, I think we can do a better job at letting the citizens know the little things that each and every one of us can do, uh such as recycling, uh planting more drought tolerant, uh uh landscaping, um green energy. Uh, looking into green energy, uh electric vehicle chargers, we can uh look into installing those uh strategic locations within our city. Uh, also, uh how to store the energy is big. I know uh you push solar, but the solar, if even if the power goes out, it it's no good because you don't have no way to store that energy unless you pay ten thousand dollars to buy a backup battery. But uh I think it's the little things that matter, uh and the city can uh do more to push those little things and informing our citizens. Uh, how to uh best doing their part for uh sustainable. Uh, yeah, to make, doing their best part to make the uh weather changes and stuff like, uh things like that. So energy efficiency. Electric vehicle charger again, store, how to store your energy, drought tolerating, renewable energy are all big and I think we could push that more as a city.
Thank you. Zach, same question to you. What do you think the city should do to be more environmentally friendly and prepare for climate changes?
Thank you. Yeah, day one would be join the Clean Power Alliance. It is adamant that we go to one hundred percent renewable energy for the city of Fillmore. Almost every other city of Ventura County has also done that. And the Clean Power Alliance has been a champion for clean power. You see, I don't take money from SoCal Edison. Um, I don't believe that their goal of twenty forty-five or one hundred percent renewable energy is sustainable at all. We are seeing right now, every year it is getting hotter. The, we just had a two week long heat wave that put us all into flex alerts. I understand people have uh misgivings about renewable energy and changing over to one hundred percent green energy. Um, but it takes everyone, it takes every single person to say that this is something that we need to address and we need to address it now. And we talk about Sacramento mandating down to us. One thing that we can tell Sacramento is that we want them to invest in one hundred percent renewable energy now. To divest away from oil, to divest away from coal, to divest away from things that are polluting our environment and are polluting our community. That is how we will make the most long impacting change to be able to stop the climate crisis and to be able to provide lower rates to our residents because current rates will go even higher if we don't do it now.
Thank you. And Carrie will wrap up this question with you regarding uh changes Fillmore can make to be more environmentally friendly and also preparing for climate impact, climate change impacts.
Okay, um first of all, you know, I've been living here in California my entire life, which is probably many more years than you've been alive, Zach. Um, and I disagree wholeheartedly with the projections that are coming from Sacramento and from Washington D C on the uh likelihood that we can be uh free of using um oil and be completely driving electrical vehicles by what year is it nineteen? I mean, twenty thirty-five, is that, is that the target date? At what cost? At what cost to the individuals? People, we're talking about, we can't can't afford to buy houses that are pay rent in California. How are we going to make that transition in a period of time like that? So um that's not gonna happen. Um, and I think it's a, a pie in the sky dream that comes from um some individuals, I think, uh in power in, not in Fillmore, but in, in Sacramento and D C. Uh, who are altruistic and this is what they want and they're gonna, they want everyone to comply and it's not realistic. Um, I think there's a lot of things, you talk about our water and sewer plant that we have here. Uh, that was uh an investment that the city made and there, I know there's issues about the um, the cost that we pay for water bills, but it's renewable water. We reuse four hundred thousand gallons. Um, anyway, so that's saving hugely and that's, that's contributing to um the environment, that's contributing to.
And I have to stop you there, Carrie. Yeah, Albert, uh we'll go ahead and start with you on this next question. Let's talk about youth. So tell us, uh how would you improve recreational space and activities for kids and families? And I'm sure you all know that for many people, they're young and you mentioned this, Albert, as far as their uh young children are not able to be able to afford a home here. So share with us your thoughts about improving life for the young recreational space and activities and even housing if you wish.
I, I think that uh to make, uh improve things for our uh youth is we gotta uh introduce the arts more. As far as drama, music, um dance. We, we need to offer those kind of programs to our youth. Because those youth uh is fosters creativity, brings the community together. And that's what we, we, we need is to bring our community together if we introduce the arts. And it's great for everybody and, and it stimulates your mind and um I think it would benefit Fillmore a lot. And we have a lot of talented people here in Fillmore that can pitch in and do their part as far as introducing the arts. Uh, we have the Sespe players. Um, as much, uh there's other uh individuals here in town. As far as, we have the community theater that's gonna uh be opening up October fifteenth, which is gonna be showing beautiful um movie and I encourage everybody to attend on October fifteenth. And uh that, that could be the crown jewel of our downtown is that community theater. So like, that, that's number one is, is the arts. Uh, two is creating more green space and, and walkable communities. Uh, uh, green space is good. Uh, I'm a runner. I love running. Uh, just getting out and breathing fresh air and parks, it's good for uh young people. And will foster their, their growth and their education and their love for nature is it's, it's unbeatable, but especially.
Thank you. And Carrie, same question to you. What uh can the city do to improve recreational space and activities for kids and families?
Yeah, and that's something that I spoke to just a short while ago and responded to another question. Uh, that's one of my top three issues um that are um I'm dealing, I'm focusing on. Um the downtown district right now, we have currently retained, uh I should say city council has retained an outside agency to uh redevelop, to look at and see where can we improve um the downtown area to attract um ju, not just the community, but make it a, a destination place for people from out of town as well. So with regard to the youth, um I'd like to see uh different um venues occupied space in the downtown on Central. Uh, specifically, I've had people ask me, bring back the pool hall, you know, do that. That was something important in that. Apparently it's a pool hall where kids could, could be there predates my time. Um, there, there just need to be destination places for kids. Um, I, I agree with Albert that the movie theater is going to be um the crown jewel down there. Um, and I am really anxious to see what happens there. Uh, Two Rivers Park um needs improvements and it's on the calendar to be done. The money is there to make the improvements and it's just a matter of time of getting um the people in that uh the to do the development and to, are to improve um the grass and the lights and the baseball diamond and everything else that goes along with Two Rivers and that will help as well, I think.
Thank you. Luis, same question to you. What can the city do to improve recreational opportunities for young people and families?
Well, David, thank you so much. I feel like I was born for this question. Well, anybody who has children that were in my programs in the past, they already know. This is one thing that I do is I, I'm able to bring kids together. We're able to be creative, we're able to paint, I'm able to teach them how to put their how to put wet paint on a canvas. Now, that's just me as, as an individual. As a city council member, I will advocate and facilitate these types of activities, not just me as an instructor, but for other artists who are up and coming here in town, who are able to express themselves in magnificent ways. In ways that keep kids away from what they're seeing on their phone, what they're seeing on T V, what they're hearing at school. Ways that they can express themselves and ways that they can express the beauty that they see within themselves as well. Aside from that, I was also teaching kids how to exercise. I did, I do have a lot of experience in personal fitness, uh group fitness. Fitness instructor, all these types of avenues um and nutrition. So during my, with my programs at the Fillmore Middle School, I was teaching kids the values of different types of nutrients, proteins, carbs, fats, how they apply to you and how we can use them effe- effectively. So all these things are things that I hold dear to my heart and they're very valuable to me and they saved my life. They will save other kids' lives.
Thank you. We'll wrap up with you, Zach, on this question about promoting recreational opportunities for young people.
I think one of the major areas is in the arts as manifest, as I've already mentioned. Uh, working with especially the art commission and the film commission on ways in which we can have internships and externships for our local youth. Especially for whenever we have filming that comes into the city of Fillmore and ways that we can get some awesome opportunities for our youth to help out at that filming and, and get some real hands-on experience in that industry. And then second is actually ask the youth what they want. We need a youth advisory council in the city of Fillmore that youth of our city tells the city council what they want. That they have a voice in that process, that they have a voice in the decisions that we are making, not just that public comment as everyone has. But as an actual commission of its own for our youth. So that they can tell us what the program that they want. Because we might, all of us here tonight might think that arts and theater is just a great thing because it was a great thing for all of us. It was for me. But maybe that isn't true for a lot of the youth in Fillmore. Maybe they want more skate parks. Maybe they want more um, you know, larger green spaces for athletics. Do we really know? I don't believe that we do here. I think that we need to talk to the youth. Um, and see what they really, really want and what really interests them. And that is gonna tell us what's gonna be most successful for you.
Okay, thank you. We have several questions here dealing with what I'll call personal rights. And so Carrie, you'll be up first. And just asking philosophically, where you think the city should get involved in making decisions on certain things? And not others. So um maybe sharing your views a little bit as far as diversity equity. Um, should the city get involved with um mandating COVID nineteen vaccines and nations to protect workers? Should the city get involved in declaring certain months pride month? Should the city get involved in deciding or making rules regarding a woman's bodily autonomy? Share with us your philosophy about where you think the city does have a role and where it does not.
The city's role, the city council's role is strictly to uh address zoning issues, um things that directly impact the betterment of the city, um without going into a lot of the social issues. Um, we have, we have no business, I think, in, involving ourselves in those types of things. We need to um, you know, we built, we approve buildings, we uh choose which roads are gonna be paved when the finances are there. It, it's the structure of the city, the um it's easy to get, especially in this day and age, to get drawn into things that um are not in the parameters of the city council's purview. We should not be involved in things that um are coming to us from a social standpoint. Um, the city, it's pretty black and white, you know, and we have um, these meetings where, you know, projects are brought to us and we don't go out and we don't seek um a business or an entity of any sort. They come to us and we, i- if it fits in the parameter of council and our bylaws, then um we can address it. But the items that you're talking about are things that I think are outside of the purview of what city council in any city should be involved in.
Thank you, Zach, you're up next, same question, you share with us your philosophy about where the city should get involved in certain issues. Like the social issues that I mentioned, COVID vaccine or COVID vaccinations, women's autonomy, Pride Month, et cetera.
As a city councillor, you are a leader in your community and I think that you are very much called. To stand up for the issues that mean most to your residents and especially to yourself. And what that leadership carries a lot of weight. For our residents to see not only themselves represented, but to see themselves respected and honored. As a queer person myself, it is very heartbreaking to have your mayor. Say that you are a lifestyle choice. It, that's just, you know, I'm, I'm a grown adult, I, I can take that because I've taken that from many people. But are you, should not have to hear that from our city council, that doesn't mean you take the topic off the table. That means that you elect leaders who will respect. LGBTQ people and their rights, will respect a woman's right to her own body. And will actually stand up and say, no, hate is not allowed in the city of Fillmore, that is what this is about. This is not about, you know, that we are solely about zoning, we are about that, that's very important, but we are also leaders. And when we are called to write letters against a woman's body autonomy. Then that is when you know that it, who side they really want it to be on. It means being a leader and it means representing the true values of our city, which is diversity, equity and inclusion.
Thank you, Albert, same question to you, share with us your views as far as where the city gets involved, it doesn't, and the issues that I've mentioned.
I think we need to create a culture where everyone feels comfortable to participate in. That's what we gotta do, I think we gotta create community dialogue and sit down and come to the table without any preconceived notions. About each other. That's how we're gonna learn and, and get to the point where we wanna be as far as diversity and equity. Because I think once we have those dialogues, then we'll figure out that we have more in common with each other than we have not in common. That's very big, I mean, Fillmore has always been about community and supporting each other. And so with that, I mean, that's what community is about, I live on a block where. Everybody, I don't even lock my door here in Fillmore and it's just. Our community, our, my block is very diverse, at least, and. We all support each other, no matter if you're queer, if you're straight, or if you're black, white, brown, whatever. Everybody supports each other and we're here for each other, we're neighbors and we should always be there for each other, no matter what. We should. Encourage participation. And. Equity, I mean, we should give everybody the same chance. At city government, I mean, and not only just give them the same chance, but give them the tools that they need to succeed. I mean, I might give Zach a ladder, but his ladder might not be the same ladder that Luis needs or that Carrie needs, we all need our own ladder to climb. And just giving everybody the same ladder doesn't work, we all need our different ladders to succeed.
Thank you, Louise, we'll wrap up this question with you, share with us your philosophy about where the city gets involved.
Well, when it comes to COVID nineteen, while California is a very progressive state, I feel like we are behind the curve when it comes to other states. So the CDC puts out information or guidelines towards. How we can express ourselves without, with or without restrictions, however, California seems to think that we need to continue. To have extremely stringent. Regulations upon people and, and not allow people to go make a living, so we talk about not being able to afford housing, we talk about not being able to afford. Electric cars, not being able to afford gas, not being able to afford groceries, but. They can go to work if they have personal choices or personal opinions, so and when it comes to the city. And in regards to. In, in the, the theme of hate or acceptance. Well. I think everybody has the opportunity, I think when it comes to sponsoring an event or. Sanctioning it officially with the city logo, I think that is up to the people and I think the people elect us as individuals. And we make that decision as, as city, as city representatives. We also want to protect our city from special interests that are actually not set up to do business here in town. However, they get an open door to enter our town during these situations. And if we wanna be very acceptable and very positive and not have any hate, we should not bully our leaders, we should not bully our neighbors. I myself have received countless harassment.
Gonna have to stop you, Louise. Okay. Candidates, I think this will be our last question for the evening. Do you feel that the community in, in Fillmore has an adequate opportunity to. Raise questions, to dialogue with the city council? How would you promote community engagement within the council, within the city? To help make Fillmore more vital and this applies to housing issues, homelessness, drugs, anything. How would you try and engage the population more, what particular policies or plans would you have? And Zach will start with you first on this question. Hold on Zach, let me unmute you there. And. There we go, it's all yours, Zach.
Alright, thank you, I think working directly with our citizens, meaning reaching out to them. It, for many, it's intimidating to come directly to the city council during public comment or even trying to contact your, I know a member of the city council to express. Your issue or what you're really passionate about, that can be daunting for, for many families and for many individuals. So I think going into the, those communities and encouraging conversations about what. They really find important and what really. They would like to see from their city government is a way in which that we can get people really involved, I've seen it firsthand where we get. Our youth directly involved in what, what they find to be important. And, and we, and teach them how to be advocates for themselves, how to be advocates for their families and their friends and their communities. So actually reaching out and working in the community with them is the first way of being accessible to our residents. We cannot just be city councillors who sit upon the dais and expect people to come to us. We need to go to them and that includes our residents, that includes businesses that we wanna attract, that includes developers. That includes everyone that we want to have a hand in making Fillmore a better place for all of us to live.
Thank you, Louise, same question, how would you promote community engagement, what particular ideas do you have?
Well, community in regards to homelessness, correct, is that the subject that?
Actually, no, I was saying community, just engaging with the community on any issues. Homelessness is just one example, but what kind of policies would you put in place to promote better engagement with your community?
I think it is difficult to put policies in place to have city council members be forced to go out and engage the community, I could only speak for myself and what I would do. What I would do is I would get in contact with all the local churches, whether it be. One faith or another. And what solutions do they have for the community, what do they see in the city that, that we can do for the people? Whether it be homelessness, whether it be drug abuse, whether it be. Spousal. Problems, family relationships, children and parent dialogue. I think that would be very important, I could only, like I said, I could only speak towards what I, I would advocate for and what I would do. In regards to policies, I think I, we need to be involved with the other committees or the other commissions, I'm sorry, the, the art commissions. All the other commissions that are involved in the city, we need to be involved with them as we already. Not we, but the city already is, however, some of the committees and commissions are not getting as much support as they need.
Thank you, Carrie, same question to you as far as promoting community engagement. Do you feel there's enough already, what would you do to increase it if there's not enough?
This has been kind of an ongoing issue and a concern, city council, for as long as I've lived in Fillmore. First off, I think one thing that we need to do is. Work harder on engaging Hispanic community, the, the non-English speakers. And to do that, we've tried several different ways that council has on translating meetings. And I think we need to work harder on that and, and engaging those that live in, in Fillmore that. Again, are non-English speaking. One thing that I would like to do and I, this is something that I learned from a previous council member, Steve Conway, who was on council before I was on council in fourteen. And he had this front porch. Time that he would spend sitting out on his front porch, community knew he was there, they could walk by, they had a spare chair and they'd sit down and chat with them. And share their concerns and ideas that they had and I think that that's being proactive and I think. It would be beneficial if all council members had that attitude, that's something definitely that I would like to do on council. There's. A lot of the issues that we're talking about, the home, let me talk about homeless real quick. Right now, the home situation is such that the numbers are low, that the homes who are here, and I'm running out of time again. We need to monitor to make sure the numbers don't get any higher and address that issue if that occurs.
Thank you, and Albert will wrap up with you, what's your ideas about improving community engagement?
We need to go out into the community and create dialogue and create roundtables, we need to. Actively go out and see. The community. And invite them to our meeting, like Carrie said, we need to involve our Spanish speaker, Spanish-speaking popul- population more. Make them feel comfortable about sharing, because a lot of them are not comfortable about coming to City Hall and sharing because of our, our past. Our past, city or city hall hasn't been so welcoming, so we need to do a better job of doing that. Currently, I think every city council member should do it and I'm currently doing it now and I've been doing it for the last month. Is I'm reaching out to the community, I'm making myself available, we should make kind of like office hours, come and speak with me and just let me know what your concerns are. How can I better serve you and practice active listening rather than just promoting what I want, because. What I want might not be what the public wants. And as far as homelessness, I'm glad Carrie touched on it, I think, I know the sheriff says that, that number is. Low, but I disagree because the sheriff's not taking into account the people that are living in with other people or relatives. It's very, very understated, we have a huge problem, how many people live with other people just to, because they're homeless, they're technically homeless. But because they're living with someone else, the sheriff or, or the city of Fillmore doesn't see that, so that number is grossly understated. And they're just one catastrophe away or one family emergency away from being homeless.
Thank you, candidates, we've reached the point where it's time for closing statements, we're gonna do it in the reverse order that we did the opening statements. We will begin with Albert, whenever you're ready, Albert, you have a minute thirty seconds.
Alright, thank you guys for putting this great form on, I'm running for Fillmore City Council to be a voice for those whose voice has been marginalized. Fillmore has historically been a town of hardworking, blue collar people led by a select few. I'm running to change that, so on November eighth, please vote for me, Albert Mendez. That's it.
You have more time if you wish, but we'll, we'll stop there. Okay, thank you, our next candidate is Carrie.
Okay. This has been enlightening for me, I'm, I'm learning from other candidates as we go along and appreciate that, but. You know, I want to serve a community and I firmly believe in servant leadership. And that's the philosophy where, you know, I'm not gonna do anything, I'm not gonna ask anything of anybody else that I wouldn't do myself. And I. Certainly believe in leading by example, and again, that goes back to wanting to have an open door policy, a front porch situation. With a spare chair to chat with our constituents anytime that they want to. The experience that I've had in the past, serving the community. Over the, the last. Umpteen years now, has enabled me to, I think, really get a handle on what the issues are in Fillmore. And I really have formulated some ideas and plans and working, already working with. Some of our constituents on some resolutions to some of these issues. So I appreciate those that tuned in this evening and I, again, appreciate the candidates who participated tonight and thank you for your time.
Thank you, our next candidate, Louise.
Well, like I said before, there's, there's three things that I like to work on as my primary platform and is community development. Helping out the youth. But I didn't, I did not have time to speak about the third, which is obviously safety, which is something that we all want here in this community, so I'm just gonna go over some few numbers during my closing statement. Commercial burglaries are up four hundred percent year to date, residential burglaries are up twenty percent. Sex offense of five hundred percent. So we need to also address these issues and take care of our community because at the end of the day. Me as somebody who just moved out of North Fillmore two years ago, people would steal from my home. Steal from my neighbors' homes, we, the underprivileged Latino community are the ones who are suffering the most from theft, from burglary. We can't take losses, if we live paycheck to paycheck, we can't take loss, so let's, let's take care of our community, let's take care of ourselves, let's be creative. Let's be compassionate, no matter what somebody believes and that's it.
Thank you, and we will close out with Zach.
Thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this event tonight, it's really awesome to. Hear from all of us and all of our opinions and thank you all for who's tuning in and watching later on as recording. Again, my name is Zachary Lockshaw and I am running for Fillmore City Council because we need. Some, some really bold action to take Fillmore forward. We need. People need places to live, people need to be able to still afford to live in the city of Fillmore. People believe that the climate crisis is an honest crisis that needs to be addressed today. People want a city government that truly represents them and truly respects them. I have a lot of involvement and a lot of connections, I've been endorsed by Congresswoman Julia Brownlee. Our current mayor, Pro Tem Lynn Edmunds, city council member Christina Villa Senor, the Central Coast Labor Council and the Southwest Carpenters Local eight oh five Union. As many, as well as many other groups and individuals. This shows just how much that I am truly respected and truly connected with our community, both in Fillmore. Throughout our county and throughout our state and even up to our federal government, which is needed for leadership, so please join me. Please go to zacharyforfillmore.com to find out more about me and how you can volunteer and support my campaign and I hope to have your vote on November, thank you.
Thank you, candidates, the League of Women Voters and others certainly recognize the effort it takes to run for office. We admire and respect you all for that and the amount of time you sacrifice from your families and others. For the audience, I'm showing some information about upcoming the election. You, every registered voter in the county, in the state actually, will be mailed a ballot. And those will start going out about October tenth, you'll be able to return ballots. By dropping them off in a drop box, mailing them, holding on to them and bringing them to a vote center closer to the actual election, November eighth. We have some information up here as far as votersedge.org, that's the place where you can go to look up any. All the candidates that serve your particular area. You can visit the League's website, www.lwvventuracounty.org. To see any of our candidate forums or to watch the video for this forum after it's posted. If you wanna know that your ballot, if you've dropped it in the mail, you can register at wheresmyballot.sos.ca.gov. And that will tell you if your ballot's been received at the post office, has it been received at the elections, has it been processed, so. All very good information, we remind everybody though to exercise your right, your fundamental right. To vote in elections, so please take that seriously, thank you to the candidates again, I'd also like to thank the volunteers from the League of Women Voters. You met our president earlier, Kathy Morgan, Pat Essex, Cheryl Collard, Matty Part, Wayne Morikin. Have all been helping tonight, thank you all to everyone and with that, we'll say goodnight.